We welcome everyone to this August 4th, 2025, meeting of the Corsican ISD Board of Trustees. This is a regular board meeting and all items that have been, that will be discussed have been duly posted. While this is a meeting in public, it's not a meeting other public. The board's role is set goals, approve personnel and budgets, making policy, make policy and provide oversight. We're not here to manage or solve individual problems. Management is responsible superintendent. As a board, we believe that we must educate every child, provide every child the greatest opportunity to learn, maintain a safe and secure environment mentally, physically, emotionally, and academically. These are our core values. We appreciate your interest in students at CIISD. We have a forum in absence of Mr. Chamber. He'll be here momentarily. So let's do the pleasures ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored and respected, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Say what you do, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for allowing us to enter today. Thank you for allowing us to live in prayer, for our love and need, for our community. For our love and help for our future. For please give us the best and most bright, make everything we do a blessing on your side. Help us, guide us, guard us and direct us. Make everything we do the best decisions for our future, as we ask from this time here.
Mayor, do we have any guests? Assistant Hand report.
Good evening, everyone. We are only nine days away from the start of school. On August 13th is just around the corner. Just a reminder, our elementary meet the teacher night is scheduled for Friday, five from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. On all five campuses. Meet the teacher for Collins Intermediate is scheduled for 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. On Monday, August 11th. And Corsican Middle School is 6:00 to 7:00 on Monday as well. Also, just a reminder, you can come out and meet our fall sports for Tigers at 8:00 p.m. On Monday, August 18th at the Community National Bank and Trust Stadium. For any other important announcements, please follow all of our social media platforms.
Next item is the call the bond election.
All right, thank you, Mr. President and board members. Tonight, I would like you to take consideration and action on an order calling a bond election in the district on November the 4th, 2025. In June, our facilities committee came to us and made a recommendation after meeting during the months of January, February, March, and April, and May. Their recommendation was number one, a new early childhood center, which would be about 800 students. That would be for our three-year-olds, our pre-K and kindergarten would all be moved to this new early childhood center. High schools CTE addition, high school kitchen and cafeteria expansion, high school bathroom upgrades, high school classroom renovations, a new ag facility, including an arena, new transportation building, Collins Intermediate improvements, Bowie Elementary restroom upgrades, new buses, Bowie and Fannin structural repairs, HVAC and roof repair replacement on campuses, and safety and security updates. So these are the items that were brought to you guys from our facilities committee recommendation. Are there any questions this time or comments?
I would like to say, first of all, thank you to everyone who gave their time and met for the facilities committee because it's a lot of time and effort put into it. This is an example of why we need this bond. This is a pipe that came out of the high school last year, and you can't even see through it because of the corrosion. And that's throughout the whole high school. And so we have issues there with plumbing and our bathrooms, and we've got to take care of our kids. So I, again, I appreciate the time that our whole, our committees put into this because this is detrimental to the future of our children. And so I know everybody on this board, you know, knows the importance of this bond, and I hope our community realizes that regardless if you have a child in our system or not, this is the future, and we know our community is growing, and we know that right now we cannot, there's no way we're going to be able to educate all the children effectively in the facilities we have. So I encourage everybody here and anybody listening that as we move forward, that you are, you know, proactively talking to our community and encouraging them and talking about the, how this is going to be a positive impact on our community and our children.
With that being said, I make a motion to approve the order calling a bond election in the district on November 4th, 2025.
We have a motion and a second to approve an order calling a bond election in the district on November 4th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, no. The motion passes and the order for calling for a bond election on November 4th is approved.
Thank you to work community.
Everybody's got a vote.
Yes, now the work begins. So if you're out here in the audience, we'll probably be calling you soon.
We will now adjourn into closed sessions permitted by Texas Government Code Section 551-01. Is there any business from closed session?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to nominate for the assistant principal at Navarro Elementary, Ms. Deborah Grigsby.
Do I have a second? A second. We have a motion and a second to approve Deborah Grigsby to be the assistant principal at Navarro. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion passes and Deborah Grigsby will be the assistant principal of Navarro.
We are excited for Ms. Grigsby. Thank you and welcome to administration.
The next thing is the district staff development plan and summer staff development report.
Okay, good evening, President Farmer, Ms. Howell, and members of the board. Dr. Harlow and I will very briefly go over our professional development update from the summer and moving forward into this school year. So in my opinion, the most important training that we did this summer was our research-based instructional strategies training, or ARBs for short. We, Corsican ISD, were one of five districts in the state to be chosen for a pilot, which basically allowed our team, our department, to be certified to deliver this training to our teachers. Otherwise, we would have had to contract out with region centers and other companies in order for our teachers to have this training. It would have been very costly, very time-consuming, and so we were very grateful to be a part of that pilot this summer. And we offered three reading trainings. We also offered math as well. And actually, on June 25th, we were observed by TEA and TNTP as part of the pilot, so that was super fun. But through all three of those trainings, we trained 98 teachers from kindergarten through sixth grade, as well as seven administrators. So we are super excited to be able to train that many teachers. And really what this training is, is it's the foundation and the research behind why we're asking teachers to do what they're doing, especially with the curriculum move to Bluebonnet. And so I threw this other little graphic up there. This was from the feedback we got from TEA. It's called a net promoter score. I had never heard of a net promoter score, but if you're in the business world, you probably know what that is. Essentially, it's a score measuring the loyalty or the effectiveness of a product, or in our case, a training, and how likely your customers, or whoever it is, is likely to suggest that to their colleagues. Millions of businesses apparently use this net promoter score, and you can score anywhere from a negative 100 to a positive 100. So anything over a zero is good, and anything over a 50 is excellent. And for our RLA training, we scored a 91 as a net promoter score, which we were super excited about. That means the training was really well received by our teachers. We also did two math trainings this summer. We did, again, research-based instructional strategies. We only offered two because we were doing a heavy lift on the reading, but that was on June 26th and July 9th, and it also got a high net promoter score of 78. No, I think it averaged out to 75, and we trained 60 total teachers in math. We also started our Bluebonnet Product Academies, our first one. It's a two, two-training session. Our first one was on July 10th. We had 100 teachers and paraprofessionals attend on July 10th, and that's to set us up for success for the new curriculum. And then on July 24th, we offered an optional training. It was an internalization day, and I just want to say it was optional. We did not make the teachers come, but 105 teachers showed up that day. No, I'm sorry, that number is wrong. 78 showed up that day. 105 came on July 10th. And then they'll have their last day of product academies on August the 6th, which is Wednesday. And then our math professional development, we're doing something similar to mirror what we're doing with RLA in math, where our third through sixth grade teachers who just teach math will be trained on their curriculum as well. And then they're also going to work with our region center to connect our curriculum to those research-based instructional strategies that they were trained on this summer. And then also, as required by House Bill 3, we are required to have 25% of our teachers or our staff members that interact with students trained on youth mental health first aid. So we have started that as well. At this time, all of our counselors and campus admin have been trained on youth mental health first aid. And then on August 7th, we are training approximately 150 additional teachers so that we can meet those requirements. Any questions before I pass it off to Dr. Harlow?
Good evening, Ms. Howell, President Farmer, distinguished members of the board. I just wanted to quickly run over a few other additional workshops that we did this summer, starting with the curriculum writing workshop that we did this summer with very specific teachers that were in the star content areas, seven through high school, and that includes English 1, English 2, and algebra as well, because those are our focuses for right now. We did have 15 teachers that were in the star core content areas, and they did come over a 14-day period, and that included two very targeted days on curriculum writing workshop, where they learned the principles of curriculum and writing design, and they were able to transfer a lot of those principles into their curriculum writing. We also offered from 7th through 12th grade, a standards alignment workshop, where approximately 40 people attended, and this was all content areas that were offered to. And so they understood their standards, unpacking standards, as well as alignment and big ideas, and even how to write assessments. And then also on that, we also had the GT 30-hour GT training, and that was offered to, that's a basic training that our new teachers take, and it's a five-day training. ELAR professional development, specifically in that, these two workshops focused on a writing workshop model, and then also to, the second one focused on tier-one instructional strategies for writing. The math professional development was also offered, 7th through 12th, and we had an emphasis on research-based instructional strategies, specific to building foundational skills for math and understanding how to conceptualize those skills. And then also, speaking on, recently, we just had our new teacher training, and I'm sorry, I have that one number incorrect. It is out of approximately 65 new teachers, we had 40 new teachers that were zero to two years attend, nine teachers that were three to six years, eight teachers that were seven to 15, and six teachers that were 16-plus years. The courses, or the courses, the trainings that we offered for the new teachers included T-Tests, Learning That Sticks, Lead Forward. And on the Lead Forward, it was nice because they came and they made sure that the mentors for the new teachers, as well as the new teachers themselves, were able to collaborate, write checklists, and then the next day, they were able to check in with their principals and be able to make a list of things that kind of pertain to teaching, since they're new to that. The next piece was additional upcoming trainings that we have that would be today and as well as tomorrow for Capturing Kids' Hearts. And I do know that we've already had a lot of positive feedback on that. And then the other piece of it would be this Thursday and Friday, we're going to be internalizing an effective implementation of unit plans, similar to the elementary. Is there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank Dr. Harlow and Dr. Farmer. The next thing is the Corsican ISD class ranking system.
Good evening, Ms. Howell, Mr. President and board. Sat here last month, and we fixed our GPA calculation to address our online classes that were counting as core. We kind of fine-tuned it a little bit in our, in our last dialogue that we had. Basically, if it was an online course, it still could be counted as a core area. You just couldn't count it for GPA calculations, which in turn would create an unfairness after we sat down and extensively looked at it. Basically, our new verbatim would be all core GPA classes will have a professor, a teacher. Any core classes not with an in-person instructor will count as an elective. So they'll still have their same divisible number, every student will. Creates a fair across the board. They won't be able to take one class for a core and another kid not. This creates a level playing field.
Questions?
How many online classes are we having to, with Navarro, are we having to utilize? Because they don't have in-person instruction.
That changes a lot just because we offer so much. We try to offer as much as we can, so we might have a blended classroom to where you might, it might just be an online classroom, where we have a facilitator of our own, our own educator, and they, they might be working anywhere from an online finance class to an online Fire Academy class, or, and it could be a lot of different things that they're not having to be taught in that room. So we, we want to be able to offer as much as we can online, dual credit-wise, with Navarro, and we don't want to, this, this regulation here with GPA doesn't handcuff any of what we offer. We're still going to offer anything and everything, and we're still going to try to offer more and more as we go for those kids on different pathways, and this doesn't take away from that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Thank you, Ms. Sidwell. Next thing will be the Corsican ISD cellphone policy.
Thank you, Ms. Howell, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm here tonight to ask you to review and approve CIISD's cellphone policy. We're asking to adopt the attached FNCE policy prohibiting student use of personal communication devices during the instructional day and on school property, effective for the 25-26 school year, to ensure compliance with Texas House Bill 1481. All right, I've got our one pager that we produced to go along with this, that we're also requesting, once we get approved with you, permission to put that out, and I'm just going to go through that so that I can answer any questions and tell you what we've come up with. This was created through the district leadership team, which included campus principals and Ms. Howell's cabinet. The effective, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We define personal, personal communication devices first through cell phones, smartwatches, pagers, tablets, laptops, earbuds, headphones, smart glasses, or any other device that we don't know about or that hasn't been created yet this year, because I have no doubt that it's coming. All of them would be outlawed during the school day. The effective date would be August 13th, first day of school. Students may bring their device to school with them. We're going to ask, and we're going to, we're going to have to ask, it's in law now, we're going to have to demand that those devices be stored away securely in backpacks, not on their person, not in their pockets, not on their wrists, out nowhere during the instructional day. Use will not be allowed during passing periods. It will not be allowed during lunches or during class. The policy will kick into play upon the initial bell of school that morning and the final bell of that day. That being said, one of the, one of the questions that were being asked is, will they be able to use it before and after school? Yes, they will. We have a lot of, a lot of students that arrive to school very early, whose parents have to drop them off, or they're brought by buses. They will be allowed to use those cell phones until that first bell rings. We also have a lot of students that are, that are a long time in the afternoon, waiting on rides, and, and some on buses. They will be able to use those devices once that last instructional bell rings to release them to those rides. The expectations are that if a student has an IEP or 504 plan that requires access, they will be allowed. Those, those students will be known by principals and teachers, and they will be allowed to use them at that point, as long as it's under the specifics that are in, in their modifications. Physician's orders on file for medical need, a school administrator grants permission for safety or legal reasons, meaning in the event of an emergency, if a kid needs to get a hold of their parent, then obviously, we're, we're going to not be crazy people on it. We're going to allow them as, as needed for those reasons. A school-issued device, it will be allowed specifically for instructional learning. Are there any questions over that?
Just a reminder, this is House Bill 1481. Corsican ISD did not create this.
We did not.
Have we published, I guess, what, if, if they violate the law, what the steps are, what we're going to do to, I guess, reprimand them for that?
Punishment phase?
Yes.
We have not, but I can tell you real quick. It's not, it's not very long. Our plan is to put that out. We don't want to put anything out until we got approval from you. First violation, phone will be taken up and locked up in the front office. Student will be allowed to pick that up after school that day. Second violation, phone will be taken up, locked up in the front office. Phone will only be issued back upon parent coming to the school for a meeting with the administration, then we'll issue it back to them. Upon the third offense, cellphone will continue to be confiscated. However, there will be, there will be a punishment phase that comes into place for the refusal to adhere to the policy on campus, and it's going to kind of be left open-ended, as we want an individualized placement for each student that, that has trouble for disciplinary reasons.
So if I'm walking down the hall and my headphones on, they're going to be taken from me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And it'll be a big undertaking. We've met with the principals. They understand that we're bound to it. Any other questions? It's an action item, so we have a motion.
I make a motion to approve FNCE policy prohibiting student use of personal communication devices during the instructional day and on school property, effective for the 2025-2026 school year, to ensure compliance with Texas House Bill 1481.
Second.
We have, we have a motion and a second to adopt attached FNCE policy prohibiting student use of personnel, personal communication devices during the instructional day and on school property, effective for the 2025-26 school year, to ensure compliance with the Texas House Bill 1481. All those in favor say aye. All those say no? The motion passes as presented. Thank you. The review and approval, yes, praiser?
Good evening, Ms. Howell, Mr. President, and members of the board. I have three things to discuss with you tonight for you to consider. First is the 2025-2026 T-Test Appraiser List. This list changes every year. We update it with the current administration. In your board book, you have a list of those appraisers, and this is the action item.
2025-26 T-Test Appraiser List, as presented. We have a motion and a second to approve the 2025-26 T-Test Appraiser List. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say no. The motion passes, the 2025-26 T-Test Appraisers List is approved.
Thank you. The next is the 2025-2026 Athletic Policy Concerning Private School and Home School Participation. We would like to approve the athletic policy that states a student enrolled in a private school, including a home school, shall not be eligible for concurrent enrollment in the district, nor for participation in curricular or extracurricular activities.
Any questions?
I move that we approve the new policy for FD local as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the FD local athletic policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion passes as presented.
Thank you. Also, the employee handbook, the 2025-2026 Employee Handbook is in your board book. I included a document that states the changes. I'm going to hit just a couple of the highlights. One is for the Board of Trustees. They changed the deadline for required notice of board meetings from 72 hours to three business days in the fourth paragraph. Also, and Ms. Farmer, Dr. Farmer mentioned this earlier, mental health training requirement is also in our handbook now. Most of the other, there's also a technology change that added an optional place for artificial intelligence policy, and that's in there. And then most of all, your other changes have to do with Senate Bill 571, and that Senate bill is around misconduct and child abuse reporting and the do-not-hire registry. So I would like to, for us to approve the 2025-2026 Employee Handbook as presented.
I move that we approve the 2025-2026 Employee Handbook as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2025-26 Employee Handbook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion passes and approved for the 2025-26 Employee Handbook.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Next thing is review and approval of the student code of conduct.
Ms. Howell, Mr. President, board members, back up here. I am requesting that we review and approve the student code of conduct for 2025-26. There are some changes that went in it, and I'm going to hit a couple of highlights for you, one of which is the cellphone policy that you just approved that comes from, from the legislative update. Another one that you need to know is there are no more three-day limits to an ISS placement on a campus. Previously, we were bound to no more than three consecutive days for ISS. It's not a practice for us to do that very often, but we do have the ability to do it now. We now have the ability to out-of-school suspend students, third grade and younger. We did not prior to this. Again, that is not a practice that comes up very often at all. I can't even think of an instance right now, but moving forward, this will give us the ability to do so if needed. A big one is that there are no, no longer mandatory DAP placements for a nicotine vape or electronic cigarette on campus. It is, it is up to us on how we handle that. However, there is a 10-day minimum of an ISS placement that must go with the nicotine portion of that. We'll continue to do what we do on, on any vape that has THC in it, which will include expulsion and a DAP placement. And we are now able to place students in DAP for a few felony offenses, mainly including anything of a sexual or violent nature that don't occur on campus. Prior, prior to this, we were bound to anything that had happened on campus or within 300 foot of a campus, and we're no longer bound to that, so there's more flexibility there. And we are now allowed to offer our virtual program, which will be edginessuity while a student is expelled. And we may or may not have been bending that already anyway. This does require both for these approvals on the updated version.
I have a question about the, if they, I guess, if they are arrested. I have a question about the, if they, I guess, if they are arrested and charges filed for something outside or off-campus, then we have the ability then to?
We do on title five expenses.
Expel them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Or to discipline them?
Discipline them accordingly.
At all, yes, ma'am, for any placing to come from that.
Okay, all right, great.
I have a comment as well. On page 128, under the possession of personal communication devices, it actually does have violation of policy will result in 123. I just want us to take note of that before we vote on this.
I'm sorry, in the student code of conduct it does?
Yes.
Okay.
Page one, or in that part, it's page nine, but overall, it's page 128.
Okay. I'll make sure that's addressed.
Any more discussion?
Do we need to look at that before we vote on it?
It's the same thing that you discussed earlier.
It looked like it, I just wanted to make sure.
It should be the same thing that you discussed earlier.
I think it is.
Yes.
We should be good.
I move that we approve the 2025-2026 student code of conduct as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2025-2026 student code of conduct. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion passes and approved 2025-26 code of conduct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from?
From Kelly at WRA.
Kelly from WRA.
So excited for y'all tonight. Your crowd behind you gave a cheer, that's always heartening for me. We're going to talk about, now that you've called the bond, bond ethics and bond communications for you, Superintendent Howell, your staff, just some things you'll want to know moving forward. Again, Kelly Trumpler, WRA Education Planner, retired superintendent, bond ethics, bond communication. So let's dive into bond ethics. Section 255.003 of the Texas Ethics Code governs election code. The big takeaway here is that this code does prohibit the use of government resources on your ability to produce or distribute political advertising, and we're going to talk about what that exactly is. To kind of break that down, so an officer or an employee, and you all would be officers, of a political subdivision, i.e. a school district, may not spend or authorize the spending of public funds for political advertising or advocacy. We will talk about that this does not talk about any factual communication, so you can definitely talk about facts anytime, and then there's other times that you as well can advocate. Of course, with any law or rule comes a consequence, so if someone were to violate this section, it could be a Class A misdemeanor, and we'll talk about the fines that can be associated with that later, but I know that is not going to happen here, but just put that out there in front. So what is exactly political advertising? That is basically any statement that is made in writing orally, it can be in a newspaper, in a magazine, maybe you're making a statement on the radio to the television station, any type of pamphlet, flyer, anything that's going out to the public, an email, a poster, a newsletter, anything on a website. So that is where political advertising could take place, either in the form of writing or verbally. When we talk about what is advocacy, it's very similar, but advocacy simply says that that would be a statement or information that is reasonably likely to influence a voter to vote in a certain way. We get into a little bit of a gray area, and we'll talk about that. When we talk about facts and opinions, you kind of go back to your third-grade lessons about fact and opinion, but then it can also bleed over, a fact can bleed over into advocacy, kind of depending on what is said. And then finally, you may have heard the term "electioneering," which is also prohibited in the, in education code as well, so "electioneering" in very simple terms are those things that are done and said to help win an election. And more specifically, this is by the Board of Trustees, is where "electioneering" comes into place. So when we talk about what can't be said or done, we talked about advocacy already and what exactly that is. This is when you could be asking someone to support or reject a measure, you could say things like "vote for X" or "let's defeat Y." Sounds very black and white, but it can be gray. If you look at that last sentence, the Texas Ethics Commission has decisions, when they've had to look at cases, and they really look at how a statement can turn into advocacy based on the tone, and maybe the emphasis that they place on who made the statement or how that statement was made. So we'll dive into a little bit of that sooner. So I would think that most of the people in this room would think that these two statements would be a fact. Good schools are the foundation of a good community. If you didn't think that, you may not be here today. Or every child deserves a good education. But actually, these are advocacy. We might think of them as a fact, but it is actually trying to influence a voter to vote a certain way by leading them to believe, if you spend money on our schools, then those good schools will lay the foundation to our good community that we're asking for. So perfectly good statements that you can make outside of your job as a Board of Trustee here in your meeting room, off of school grounds, not at a ball field, statements that a staff member can make, just not at school during school hours and things of that nature. Another mistake that sometimes districts make is sharing an endorsement, so obviously, if the mayor of Corsicana has voiced his support, or the measure is supported by the Corsicana Chamber of Commerce, that is a fact, that person can be tracked down and they made that statement. But if the school district then advertises that statement, they're then bordering on advocacy for the bond, which they have to stay away from. So we just need to let those elected officials, those business members, chamber members make those statements on their own. And as a school district, do not replay those. So just some examples of violations. Our citizens now have the opportunity to support Corsicana ISD students. Please support the vision, our future depends on your commitment. So this is a violation that orders on advocacy, if you use words like "best solution," "fantastic," "state of the art," et cetera. So how could you change one of those from advocacy to not? If you were trying to describe "state of the art," what could you do to make that an allowable statement? So you could go and give specifics about what you are doing with your CTE facilities to make them state of the art without using that term, and just really give factual information about the scope of the bond in those projects. This last one is my favorite, I've never seen it, but if you're not for the bond, you don't like kids, so we're going to stay away from that statement. I'm sure it was put somewhere, which is how come it made the list, but let's stay away from that one. Someone up there is going, hmm, I don't know. These are some activities that would be violations to Texas Ethics Code. Distribution of political advertising on work time, so if staff members are distributing flyers, that would be advocating for the bond, that is not allowable. An employee sharing their opinion in their capacity as an employee while on school property. Placing advocacy materials in the teacher's lounge, so just merely coming and setting a stack of stuff on the teacher's lounge table, is not acceptable by a staff member. Using their school email, also a big no-no. Using the district's internal mail systems, so those mailboxes in the lounge or in the office area, and then using district letterhead or a logo. So anything that WRA markets for you will have a separate logo, it will not use your Corsicana logo at all. So all of these things that I have talked about, you can't do. It's not to say that you as a board, the staff that are here, the staff that are on campuses cannot advocate, they just cannot, they have to use their own time, and it has to be off of school property. And the bigger thing to remember, especially for you all, is that you cannot authorize the use of funds or district resources, and we'll really get into the nitty-gritty about what district resources include, because it's more than just money, to advocate for the bond. So one of the questions I had in my district, when we went out for our bond, was what can I do on his or on my own time? I would and have suggested that Mrs. Howell talk to bond counsel, they're going to be the one that would represent her. Our best advice is really only speak on factual purposes. I was viewed as the superintendent 24/7, 365, if someone wanted my opinion, they didn't want Kelly Trumpler's opinion, they wanted Kelly Trumpler, who knew the ins and outs of her buildings. So really just, Stephanie's going to get to be very factual, and her opinion ended about 15 minutes ago. So what about at board meetings? Can you at a board meeting advocate for or against a proposed bond referendum? Same as Mrs. Howell, in this setting, as of about 15 minutes ago, you all cannot advocate for that, when you're in a board room during a board meeting. So you can only talk about facts in this setting moving forward. However, it is okay, outside of a location that's not under your control, where school events, and where school events are not taking place, you can absolutely have an opinion. So our recommendation is just not on school campuses, not on school grounds, not at ballfields, that might be the hardest place when someone comes up to you, but just remain very factual. One other question that you may get is, can an employee speak out during public comment or during some type of the citizens' comments section at a board meeting? And they absolutely can, as long as they're off-duty, which should be fine, because most of your board meetings are not during the school day. So staff can have an opinion either for or against during a board meeting, during that public comment section. As with anything, there is a complaint process, so if you have a member of the community that feels like someone has violated any of these rules, they then will file a sworn complaint. That complaint will be looked at by the Texas Ethics Commission, they will start a review and a hearing, and then undertake any actions that they would see necessary. One other important reminder is that this pertains to any employee, not just those employees that are in leadership positions. So every employee in Corsicana ISD has to abide by these rules, whether on school property or working in their job capacity. This one gets into a little bit of the resources, so it talks about an employee or an officer who uses funds or resources to engage in political advertising would be violating the Texas Election Code, so this can be things like their telephone, their computer, the printers, the coffeers, we talked about their email, that's a district resource, their time is a district resource, so while they're on school time, they can't be asked to create anything, produce anything, distribute anything. And if they're not asked, they just can't do it on their own either. So we've talked about what we can do, so let's talk about, can't do, so let's talk about what we can do, because there are things that can be done, for sure. So the good news is, when you talk about yourselves as board members and district employees, as long as you are on your own time and off of school property and using your own resources, then everybody, pretty much with the exception of Superintendent Howell, is able to advocate for the bond. One thing that the district is actually supposed to do, and I know we're already working on those things, the district is to provide factual information, so that factual information includes this list of things, all the details about the bond, any tax impact the bond would have, information about the buildings, about capacity, about enrollment, about growth rates, and where and when election times and places are. So anything that is factual, the school district can definitely put out. So a statement such as, Corsicana ISD is holding a bond election on November 4th, 2025, to address growth in the student population, aging facilities, as well as safety and security. That is factual and exactly what the bond is covering. You could also make a statement, if applicable, that the bond package could reduce maintenance costs by $200,000 per year, so that's just a factual statement that can go out. I won't read both of these to you, but this just kind of lets you look at the difference between advocacy and factual. So the top one, when it talks about vastly increasing the student's knowledge and opportunities to succeed, the bond is essential, that word "essential" leads toward advocacy, whereas that bottom statement is just factual. The bond will bring us current, with current laws and codes, it will improve the infrastructure so that we can offer new programs. Some other things that can happen at CISD, this first one is actually a requirement, all high schools are supposed to have a registrar that would register their seniors, so I'm sure y'all have that, but it's absolutely okay to encourage those seniors that are turning 18 before election day to register to vote. It's also okay if you want to have subs watch classes to make it easier for your teachers to vote, you're not telling them how to vote, you're just telling them to go exercise their right to vote. Your calendar's probably already built, so you may not be able to have some type of staff development during early voting time. And you can also ask your elections judge for a location at Corsicana ISD, if that's something you'd be amenable to doing as well, just make it easier to get those parents and staff there to vote. Okay, so you ready for a test? You either shout out the answer, or you thumbs up, thumbs down, you something. And on my copy, I gave you the answers are not there, so no cheating. Can a staff member write a letter to the editor urging support for the bond using their own time and resources? That one's pretty easy, own time and resources being key, absolutely. Can a staff member use a district copy machine to make "vote yes" flyers? Y'all are on it, that is a definite no. Can the following sign or billboard be placed in front of a school? Future site of early childhood center proposed to be paid with bond proceeds? That is a yes, it's factual, it's just stating this is where it would go. Can a board member authorize the spending of district funds to create a brochure urging support of the bond? That's a big no. But what can you authorize spending of? Factual, any type of factual brochures, mailers, anything of that nature. Can a staff member advocate at the Old Mexican Inn, which is a really good restaurant, I've been there?
Excuse me.
For support of the bond?
Excuse me, I think that's correct, incorrect. K&amp;K barbecue.
I'll go there next time, okay? So wherever they are at a restaurant, can they advocate for support of the bond using their own time and resources? Absolutely. Can the district create an information booklet that includes a copy of a press release and other information about the bond? The press release quotes the school board president as saying, "This bond is the right thing to do for the children of the community." So the first part was a yes, the second part made it a no. Can a postcard be mailed by the PAC that advocates passage of the bond measure by stating that the best solution for school district needs would be to do exactly what the school district has proposed, to do with the proceeds of the bond? So anything that starts with PAC and advocacy, that's a yes, they can advocate, that's their job, if a PAC is formed, is to advocate. If asked at work, can an employee privately tell a parent or another employee that they support or oppose the bond election? So it's that on-school property that gets them there. Can a school board member join a political action committee to raise money and advocate for the passage or defeat of the bond? That's a yes, your own time, own resources, you absolutely can. That was the last one. Okay, y'all are good to go. So just a kind of a what-if, what if there's a violation? The one I found most interesting, so the fine could be $5,000, but if someone complains and that complaint is deemed to be frivolous, they get a higher fine of $10,000, so kind of to stop just frivolous complaints from flooding the system, I'm assuming. But here's what I like to tell school districts, this is what you don't want to see. You don't want that headline that reads, "Corsicana ISD violates bond campaign laws," even if it's not true, or "Corsicana ISD violates..." it's not true, or Corsicana ISD violates ethics laws. That's only going to fuel the fire of any vote no group and that'll be the focus. So that's for sure why we don't want to do it. And it's wrong. So moving forward, keys to success. We're already starting to work on the plan with your admin team, getting that marketing going. I know you'll have a press release dropping first thing in the morning and then you'll start seeing more information, so that's kind of step one. What you guys really need to work on is just engaging your community, engaging those folks that you talk to on a regular basis. Listen to them. If you're hearing concerns, report those back to Mrs. Howell so we can get some FAQs out on the website and get that correct information out there. Of course, share and double share, point people to the website, social media, all of those things. And then just really work to unite the community, which I know is what, what you're going to do. We really just are going to work to educate voters, respond to their questions, always being transparent, and then utilize data when we get into that early voting era to encourage voter participation, which y'all will have access to that as well. So any questions?
We're going to train our principals and our principals will train our staff.
And you can use any of this that you'd like to modify. And for y'all, I have a team of eight certificates for y'all since you all here participated.
And now we'll hear from Mayor O'Brien.
All right, good evening. Now I have some very exciting, fun things to show you tonight. So during the summer break, we have still been working hard at the design. So this is going to be a quick glimpse of potentially what the design can be. I do always want to start with a quick statement of it's subject to change pending the bond election and we'll still go through a full design process. So this isn't set in stone by any means, but our intention is to paint a picture for the community so they can get an idea of what's to come. It also helps us just programming and making sure the dollars work and all of that. So based, so let me back up. So we have had multiple meetings with Ms. Howell and district admin team. We've even met with some of the personnel with the high school to talk through the programming. So a lot of those pieces are starting to fall in place and those conversations are happening. But again, it's still a work in progress. So there's going to be an evolution and lots of moving pieces that go into this. This is an overview of the district, basically a quick snapshot of where in the district the projects are happening. So you see it's pretty spread out. However, the bulk of the projects and the bulk of the dollars will be spent around the high school area. And so I'm going to zoom in on that area and I can give you a copy of this presentation too afterwards. But based on our conversations, one of the biggest questions is where's the ECC going to go, so the early childhood? We looked at various sites that the district currently owns land at. And after discussion, for now, we are looking at right south of the middle school off of Drain Road. It's currently, it's paved and then it deadens into a dirt road and it's really just a bunch of trees out there right now. So we went and drove it and, for sure, can't really, you need four-wheel drive if you want to go in there. But so that's a proposed location, of course, at the high school for the CTE campus. The new transportation building, it's kind of right in the middle below the middle school. That's currently the grounds and maintenance has some property there, so we thought that could be a good site. And then potentially if transportation gets moved, maybe where transportation currently is could be a good site for ag. So, as ideas. But again, open to opinions and feedback for sure. Okay, so we want to focus, tonight we really want to focus on the high school and some of the ECC. And as the bond campaign continues on, we'll keep rolling out some other images and, and marketing material and always work with the district communications department as well as our bond communications department to make sure it's, it's constant and fresh and trying to keep that momentum going through the election process. So, let me see if I have a laser. That's not on the TV. So on the high school, where we're currently looking at putting the CTE is where a bunch of the stairwells are that face FM 774. So on that side, and that does quite a few things as we go into the floor plan. So we're able to connect the corridors back. We can create a secondary spine for a better flow of the campus because I know there is a pretty good bottleneck down that one central spine. We are exploring having four large CTE labs in, in discussion of what goes in those. Classroom space, lots of storage, offices, regular classrooms. And because we're connecting the existing campus, we would remove the old stairs and do new stairs, bring lots of natural light into the space, as well as having outdoor work and build areas. This is the floor plan of the second floor, so it's, a lot of it is just stacked on top of each other. So we're creating efficiencies by stacking a lot of those programmable spaces, including restrooms. So this is a shot looking from the road directly facing the campus. So if you'll notice, two of the labs on the left-hand side will have less windows and that's because they're the storm shelter. Just based on what we're programming, we have to put it somewhere. So we're just a little more restricted on windows and things like that for a tornado shelter. But on the right side, we are planning on having lots of light. Again, covered awnings and build areas, easy to load and unload materials and a really nice circulation for the campus. We're also thinking of connecting the student parking lot with the staff parking lot along that road, again, to help with flow. This is another shot as you move down. So the staff parking lot is on the left there, so starting to see what that space could potentially become.
And these, these facilities in the front would house automotive, welding, those?
Yes.
Ag or what classes?
Let me go right to the plan. Okay, so the, starting from the left, so we did carpentry and a metal shop because, and we didn't want those in the storm shelter because they're going to have a lot of exhaust and ventilation and a lot of penetrations and per code, we have to be careful about that. And then auto and ag mechanical on the right-hand side. So where it's a darker line around it, that's the actual square footage of the storm shelter, which is sized to house your entire student body.
Okay.
And staff and a little extra in case there's visitors. Yeah. Other questions? Oh, and then with that, we are planning on renovating some of the existing CTE spaces. That's just not shown today on that. You'll also notice on the second floor, that new spine is going to have lots of light. As I mentioned, we're trying to bring lots of windows into the space. The classroom core of the existing campus is just very dark. There's a lot of internal classrooms, so trying to bring as much natural light as possible. Here's a bird's eye view, so you can see. Outdoor build space, so still very tall. We, we can fence it off or keep it open. All those conversations are coming. And then looking at the corridor space. Okay. Then I was going to show some of ECC. So do you have any questions on the CTE portion? Awesome, cool. And again, this is just a snapshot where we are. We wanted you all to see everything before we publish or put anything out in the public. So of course, so please, if you have feedback, please let me know. Okay, for ECC, as I mentioned, we are looking at the site location off Drain. The triangle wedge at the south end of the site is not district property, so it's important to note that. So the entrance into the site would really have to come off that left-hand side. So as we work through the site and flow of traffic and everything, that will be the main entrance, but we can connect all the way back to the middle school for decent flows or if parents have multiple kids dropping off, how, those are all going to be very in-depth conversations. So this campus, we're looking at 42 classrooms. It's, it's big, so for 800 kids. So when, when I'm working with little kids like that, the scale of a building that size is just really large. So in this concept, we're trying to maintain all the core spaces in the center. So really, it, it almost cuts the building down by a third because if you're in, say, in one of the pods on the left-hand side, you're not really going all the way across to the other side of the school. So it helps on the travel distance for the littles. But with the pod concept, it also, it creates, it starts breaking that scale down and start, can become neighborhoods and teachers can collaborate and, and really work together for the campus. So there's other conversations that we're still going to have, even about, you know, the size of the gym, does it need to be a full-size gym? Do we want to allocate those resources somewhere else? All of those conversations are coming. But this is where we are today. Quick look at the massing of these spaces. So again, try to utilize a lot of natural light, clear story windows, not skylights as much as possible because they do tend to leak, I mean. So, but lots of clear story windows that can just be a really pleasant space for the kiddos. Yes, so we can go back. So with this plan, we could easily, I mean, you can really add on in any direction. You could add additional classrooms on the ends or build out on any section. Yeah, I would say so. An 800-student campus is quite large, so yeah, for elementary. Oh yeah, yeah, absolutely. And we can always draw that in for a master plan and plan for the future, even if, you know, we're not building it today. Okay. So kind of where we're at, we might, you know, fine-tune a couple of things, but overall this is hopefully going to be one of the big marketing publications. So that can go on. Okay, any other question?
I think Mary will eventually come back, right? With additional.
Oh, you'll see. We're just getting to know each other.
I do have a quick question going back to the high school. How many classrooms would be in that addition and bathrooms? Because bathrooms are a big thing for us.
Yes. Oh, yes, I know. And we are still planning on renovating all of the existing restrooms. So for this, we have two group restrooms just in this on each floor.
Okay.
So as kids circulate through, even in the existing part, they're still pretty close to a restroom. Per code, in a storm shelter, we do have to have a restroom, so that is why it's within that area. And on the second floor, we, well, on the second floor, we do have, sorry, excuse me, we have one set of group restrooms, but we could have a second if we needed to. So, but we don't have the large spaces because those are like a two-story volume.
Is it 10 additional classrooms or was it eight? I can't remember.
10. I don't. Uh, one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10. Yeah. Yeah, so 10. Not counting the labs.
Right, yeah, just 10 classrooms plus the four labs.
Correct, correct.
And then we'd renovate the existing CTE as part of this and then?
We were thinking that would be culinary arts, digital or multimedia. That's where that would go.
Yeah.
Where CTE is now.
Yeah. Yeah. And, yeah.
Can you, do you have transportation?
Um, we are working on the transportation plan. It just wasn't quite fine-tuned enough to show tonight, but it is in the works. So, yeah, you can even see some of the outline of the floor plan, but I want to work through some of the site circulation a bit more before I bring it to you. So you'll also soon be seeing some interior shots of the cafeteria expansion, the ag and the transportation building. So those are going to be coming and we'll present those.
Any other question?
It's happening. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly, Mary. Appreciate it. We were now adjourned into closed session permitted by Texas Government Code Section 551-01. Thank y'all.